I wish to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, September the 6th, 2023. I will note for the record that Commissioner Thomas and I are present in the Nat U Hill Room. This time, I'll call on Commissioner Thomas to read our public statement.
Good morning. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you. This time, we'll move on to department updates. First up is Lori Kelly of the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. So, we are continuing to see increases in COVID cases. However, the numbers do still remain far below past points in the pandemic. As a reminder, those who test positive for COVID should isolate for five days per the CDC recommendations, ending isolation after five days if you are fever-free for 24 hours without medication and symptoms are improving. The FDA is expected to approve the updated COVID vaccines within the next seven days. After that occurs, the CDC's independent panel of advisors are scheduled to meet on September 12th to provide guidance on those who will be eligible for vaccines.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
No questions. Thank you for the information.
I look forward to getting my next booster. Thank you. Are there any other departments with an update? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda. Commenters are limited to three minutes. If you wish to share something with us, please state your name and whether or not you are a Monroe County resident. Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes.
I move approval of the minutes for August 30th, 2023.
Second, any corrections or comments?
No, I ended up watching the meeting.
You watched it?
I did watch it.
Very good. Well, I did send in one correction, and it was taken care of, I noticed, in what is in the packet for today, so I appreciate that. So, all those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of the claims docket accounts payable September 6th, 2023, and payroll September 8th, 2023.
Second, and we have Mrs. Miller again. Good morning.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for September 6th, 2023 totals $4,441,552.43. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for September 8th, 2023 includes $1,330,832.13 in direct costs, and the remaining $561,603.24 were for indirect costs, for a grand total of $1,892,435.37.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions?
None. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the public? I don't have any comments or questions either. All those in favor signify, or all those in favor of approval of the claims docket, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. I will note for the record that there are no reports this week, so we will move on to new business.
I move approval of the introduction review of ARPA sub-recipient policy and Resolution 2023-26.
Second, and we have Mr. Cockrell here with us.
Yes, as we've moved forward with the ARPA funding and looking at and hiring Baker Tilly, we've noticed that, you know, some of the things that we're having to go back and find more information for, things that we're trying to resolve upfront now that we're getting closer to our deadlines. What you have before you is a plan that is looked, was put together by the Auditor's Office, reviewed by County Legal, also reviewed by our auditing agency, Forvis, as well as Baker Tilly, our consultant. It's pretty in-depth, and it deals with sub-recipient monitoring and that scope, which is different than a direct beneficiary. So, this would be, this would apply to people who we're giving funding to that would then turn around and give funding to others. So, that's primarily what this is. It also has some things we look at if we're going to do a direct beneficiary to make sure that they qualify under ARPA for funding. So, it's just kind of a fairly long and in-depth process, but that is dealing with federal money and making sure we are in compliance. And I know the Brian Gregory's also on this, in this meeting. If you have any questions, she would be more than happy to help me answer.
Ms. Gregory, do you have anything to add to what Mr. Cockrell said? Commissioner Thomas, anything?
It's a lot of legalese. But it is very helpful to have this, so I'm grateful for everyone for putting this together.
It is very dense, but also very, very thorough in so many levels, so I really appreciate the work. Is there any public comment on this item? I see a hand raised, but Lee, please state your full name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Lee Greenhaper. Monroe County resident. I had a question whether this is going back to funds that were already given previous to this date through ARPA, where this is only going forward. And so, that's the basis of my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cockrell?
I guess the simple answer is that this is going forward. I think the more complex answer is a lot of these are federal requirements that we have to meet in order to comply with our auditing. And so, there are some things in here that even if we have given the funding and have awarded the funding, we will need the information from those people to let us be in compliance with our federal audits. Each agreement that we put together for these includes language that says you will work with the county and you will comply with any requests we make because we need to comply with the audit. So, it's strictly going forward, but a lot of the, a lot of the items may, we may go, we may have to, if we haven't already, go back to those that we have given these funding to in order to make sure we comply with the federal audit.
So, we're just kind of adding or asking for additional information from anybody that we've already given money to?
To the extent we need it, and to the extent that we need it to comply with our, with the federal government's guidelines, we have the authority under our contractual arrangements already with them to get that information. And so, some of the concepts in this would apply to that, but this document would not.
That is, Commissioner Thomas just said it's if we need it. Thank you for that reminder. Councilmember Ibersen.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. My question is, the contract lays out the assessment of risk and monitoring. Would Monroe County be doing that, or would that be Baker Tilly? What would be the process there?
Well, and I think there are a couple of different things that we're looking at. One is when we're dealing with sub-receipients, they are going to have to, as an entity, comply with this as well because it is federal funding, right? So, these are, one, it's making them aware, if they are a sub-recipient, what they're going to have to do. If they're a beneficiary, again, the rules are a lot different for that, and there's a lot different standards for how that works. So, I think what the area that you're talking about is, is that when we do a risk assessment, it's going to indicate what we feel is reasonable for our oversight in order to comply with what the federal government wants us to do. So, the federal government, if they indicated that our, if our analysis indicated that someone was a higher risk of non-compliance with the agreement, then we have a higher level of how we're going to review how they utilize those funds. If it's a lower risk, we have a lower level, and so that way, if something does go wrong, we say, hey, here's your risk analysis, here's how we monitor them, so that we would still maintain compliance with Treasury guidelines.
And in my reading of this, it was, it indicated that it was the Auditor's Office that would perform the risk assessment. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other comment? Seeing none, call for a vote on the introduction review of ARPA sub-recipient policy and Resolution 2023-26. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of the Indiana Department of Health Disease Intervention Services Grant, a fund name, Disease Intervention STD, fund number 8180, in a grant amount of $139,758.
I will second, and we have Ms. Kelly back with us.
Yes, so I actually submitted this to be presented on the work session, so I think I first have a question about whether I need to wait until the work session or proceed with the formal, this is just for ratification of the grant agreement?
No, I'm okay.
I'm okay. I've read through it. Yes.
Okay. So, this is just standard annual funding to support our STD program. This is going to help support two full-time personnel.
Questions or comments?
No, I will note that this is a 12-county effort. This is, this is a lot of work, and really appreciate their hard work, and this is important for all of our communities.
It is. It is. We know that disease does not know the county boundaries.
That's true.
It is important to follow up this way. Ms. Purdy?
Yeah, just for clarification of what's going on in this particular grant, is this grant was sent erroneously directly to Commissioner Githens, and there are processes that are in place. When she receives one sent directly to her, they expect that it's already been vetted and approved. So, this was signed on August 9th.
Right.
And so, this is just bringing it back to the county and going through the formal process.
So, we're ratifying?
You're ratifying.
Thank you. Is there any other comment on this? No, any public comment? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Indiana Department of Health Disease Intervention Services Grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item.
I move approval of the Indiana Family Health Council Title 10 Agreement and HIPAA Addendum. Fund name, Futures Title 10, fund number 8126, in a grant amount of $80,765.
I'll second that, and we have Ms. Kelly again.
Yes, and this is just standard funding to support the Futures Family Planning Clinic. So, we are currently operating off of TANF grant funding and program income. At the end of this month, we will switch over to this Title 10 grant funding and program income to be able to support the clinic year-round.
Questions or comments?
None. Thank you for the hard work.
I found it incredible how detailed it is that specifies, you know, a minimum of so many unduplicated patients and this increase and that increase, and yeah, it's very, very specific in terms of what must be completed during the term of the grant. So, questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the Indiana Family Health Council Title 10 Agreement and HIPAA Addendum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Next item.
I move approval of Ordinance 2023-32, an amendment to Monroe County Code, Chapter 755, the use of and work within a county right-of-way.
I'll second, and we have Mr. Cockrell here.
Yes, and at last week's work session, Lee Baker went through with this fairly detailed, essentially change by change, so I'm not planning on doing that today. But I think the basics of this change is to describe what owners are required to do on property that is adjacent to the county right-of-way, and allows the Highway Department to go in and do some work if it's causing a hazard to the right-of-way, and then how that work would get compensated for, and how the fees would go in. So, it's, what we're talking about here are items that aren't on the county's right-of-way because without this, we don't really have a lot of authority to go on to a property owner's property to make these changes, even though they're creating a potential hazard to our right-of-way. And so, this kind of creates the rules on how that work gets done. I don't think this will change Highway Department's kind of standard of trying to work with property owners, trying to make sure they understand what's going on, understand what part's their obligation versus ours, and, you know, things that are fairly minor in nature, I think the Highway Department would probably just go ahead and take care of. It's just the kind of bigger items that are harder to deal with that that would come into play.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add, Ms. Ridge? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, Jeff explained it really well. There's just some gray areas, and this really defines it, what county highway responsibility is and a property owner.
Is this pretty similar to what is in place in other counties across Indiana?
I could not answer that. I know in our association, we've had a lot of discussion on trees. And it seems like everybody has a different opinion. A lot of times, people think we own the trees. We don't own any trees. So, this is just to try and clarify some of that, and we don't want to haul away a tree if somebody's wanting it for firewood or something. And then, if we haul it off and then there's an issue, they want it back, or it just, it really simplifies and makes everything a little bit consistent.
Yeah. Really helps. That example was very clarifying. Yeah, thank you.
Well, and I think it codifies things for the future, not that I ever imagined you retiring, but in case that happens. Is there any public comment on this item? Yes, Lee?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name.
My name is Lee Greenhaper. I'm still a Monroe County resident. I'm interested in how this applies when there's electrical easements and/or classified forest property, which, you know, the electrical easement, like through RMC in my case, and then also state, the state classified forest property that the property owner might have their property in, and how this plays with those types of restrictions for the owner.
Can you answer that?
Yeah, I can't speak for utility easements. We don't track the utility easements when we go to remove the hazard that's impeding out into the right-of-way, out into the safety of the motorist that's driving along the road. And we would strictly deal with the property owner because that easement is actually on their property. So, we don't monitor the utility easements. If there's a forestry, if we're dealing with a property owner, we would probably know that upfront if we're dealing with a special situation like that. To my knowledge, we haven't ran into anything that specific, but again, a utility easement's really basically between the property owner and the utility company.
And I would say that this is, Chapter 755 is for use of and work within a county right-of-way, and the utility easements would not be a county right-of-way.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there any other public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on Ordinance 2023-32, amendment to Monroe County Code, Chapter 755, use of and work within a county right-of-way. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of Ordinance 2023-29, the Lake Lemon Marina Rezone.
Second, and we have Mr. Meyer back with us. Good morning, Myers, whether, good morning, Drew.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is Ordinance 2023-29, also known as Case File REZ-23-1. It's located at 9554 East North Shore Drive. On June 20th, 2023, the Plan Commission made a positive recommendation to approve this petition, the vote of eight to zero, out of the following condition, that a petitioner contracted licensed, Indiana licensed engineer to prove that site distance can be met and approved by the Monroe County Highway Department. This information will be provided before the petition is heard by the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. So, we heard this last week. This petition is for the Lake Lemon Marina Rezone. They are petitioning to remove a condition of approval from a rezone petition that was approved in 2007, and within that rezone, there was a condition of approval that no new driveway cuts be established off of East North Shore Drive, and that the access be derived all through a shared driveway that provides access to the marina, as well as these additional lots that were created under that rezone 2007, as well as some existing lots as well. So, here on the screen is that item that was provided by the petitioner that shows site distance measurements after the removal of vegetation across the street. And I'm going to go through some of this rather quickly. We can all come back to it if there are any questions, as we did hear this last week. So, the property is 3.14 acres. Again, they're asking to go from limited business to limited business with the removal of prior condition of approval from Ordinance 2007-48. And the ordinance language here is highlighted, access to proposed lots be provided by an ingress egress easement at the existing petition site entrance, or via easement from another existing driveway cut. No new driveway cuts shall be allowed onto East North Shore Drive. In order to remove a condition of approval from a prior rezone condition, a separate rezone request must be made, and that is the petition you're hearing this morning. So, if approved by the county commissioners, petitioner intends to apply for major subdivision preliminary plat amendment with sidewalk waiver to remove the requirement restricting a sidewalk, as well as remove that condition of approval for this, for the driveway cut. Sure intends to submit a commercial site plan amendment, as well as possible design standards variances to adjust some various aspects of the commercial site, like paving, parking, landscaping. The first step in this process is the driveway condition, and it is staff's understanding that the driveway condition is conditioned in both the rezone, as well as the preliminary plat that came right after the approval of the 2007 rezone. You may be wondering why the Marina, the Marina's property, which is highlighted in blue here on the right side of the screen, is involving these two separate lots, and two separate lots have the driveway question. That's because when the rezone in 2007 went through, all three of those parcels were one lot of record, and it was a condition of approval for that rezone that created, or led to, excuse me, these two lots switching from limited business to estate residential. And it is under that rezone condition that the driveway to those lots be conditioned to be shared with the existing Marina driveway. So, that's why it seems like two unrelated parcels with their own driveway is getting, is connected with the Marina property and its own driveway. If denied by the county commissioners, the petitioner may continue to operate the properties of Lake Lemon Marina under the limited business zone. The petitioner must remove a driveway entrance and instead use the shared driveway design. Petitioner may still apply for the major subdivision preliminary plat amendment and subsequent processes for the commercial site plan, but they will still have to have that shared driveway with the Marina. So, here I have some background. This is just kind of a brief summary of the petitions that have come through this property since 2005. Essentially, what happened is there were subsequent rezones followed, each followed by a subdivision. So, back in those days, what they would do is they would rezone a property in preparation for a subdivision, and that's what happened in 2005 and 2006 and '07, is that portions of the larger Marina lot, the original Marina lot, were rezoned, and then those portions were then subdivided off to create residential lots. So, that's mostly what this background is covering. And the most recent, November 2016 and January of 2019, the latter of which was a plat amendment that kind of identified some discrepancy with the dedicated right-of-way, and that plat document does have some language on there identifying or calling back to, if you will, the original requirement for the shared driveway design. So, here I have some of those images of the plats as they came through. So, we will see 2006, we had three lots. Then, in 2008, there are now five lots. And then, in 2019, this is the plat amendment that clearly identifies the private tribes requirement to be relocated to the Marina's entrance and be shared. So, here's some exhibits from the original ordinance, and then I have several slides here of site conditions and floodplain apartment comments, as well as pictures of the petition site as well. Last meeting, the petitioner did make reference to a video of traffic activity that occurs on North Shore Drive and Marina entrance. At the time of the last meeting, I was unable to open that link. The link had expired, but I was in communication with the petitioner this morning, and he did provide a new link, so I can show that during his presentation, or if you request to view that. We can show it at, you know, two times speed and click through it, just to get an idea of what traffic looks like in the area. I've also included some exhibits here. This is one of the letters submitted by the petitioner, as well as an as-built survey on the right side of the screen. These are the driveway permits that were issued in 2016 that were subsequently retracted, and the Highway Department can speak more on that. We did have an appeal submitted by the petitioner. I stated this at the last meeting. The petitioner, Mr. Stephen Werner, submitted this appeal against the Highway Department's determination to deny the driveway. That appeal did go to the county commissioners through the Highway Department's appeal pathway, and that hearing was held on May 11th. The appellant did not attend the hearing, and Commissioner Githens, she reviewed it and made a determination that affirmed the Highway Department's denial of driveway permit. So, that appeal went into effect or came about in the middle of the rezone process. Plan Commission had not yet voted to forward the petition to the county commissioners with any sort of recommendation, so it was a little bit of, you know, it was tricky to kind of understand how this appeal interplayed with the Plan Commission's recommendation. But this is still the final stop for a rezone request at the county commissioner level, so we'll be discussing everything in detail. Here's another exhibit of letters. This is all included in the packet. This is provided by the petitioner. Petitioner did also provide me with a new letter that he will be speaking to. I will pull it up during his presentation, during his allotted time. That is not included in this packet, and it is not included in this presentation because if I included it in the presentation, it would get too pixelated, so I have it separately as a PDF that I'll bring up on the screen during his statements. Okay, so at this time, I'll open it up to questions. I'll also note I did receive a new email from one of the property owners that is Jason to the Marina. They are the Um, that is Jason to the Marina. Uh, they are the property owners to the east, the Hamers. So I received a letter from them asking some questions about alternative driveway cuts onto East North Shore Drive and I can bring that up as well. Um, if they are going to be speaking this morning, I believe they are in attendance either virtually or in person. So I'll open to questions.
So how long is the video that was made available?
Yes, one second. Let me see exactly how long.
So my understanding, it's a video of traffic in that area generally, correct?
Yes, it is. Um, here, I can pull it up on screen.
Spent a lot of time there. You've been there. I'm not sure I need that um, information. It's um. But it's up to you.
Oop, sound. Um, so this is just the video. I put it up two times speed. It's eleven minutes long. Um, so I can click through it. Um, this is taken, I believe, um, weekend in May. I think it was May fourteenth to fifteenth, I believe.
So it's not all one straight. I mean, it's on two different days. This is somebody has been able to pick and choose what they're showing here.
Yes, it, it is an edited video. It's not simply a, just a.
Got it.
Yeah, you can see the time in the bottom corner.
Yeah, thank you. Well, knowing that it's an edited video, it doesn't really help me a whole lot. So I think that's sufficient.
You can leave it running while we hear from the petitioner if you want. It's up to you.
It's fine. So at this point, since we've already heard from the petitioner, we've heard people in favor of petition. Um, I'd like guidance on how to run this.
Well, last week, this item was tabled because the highway engineer had not had a chance to review one of the documents. And so I think having the highway engineer come and and state his opinion on whether, and I, I, whether the sightlines are correct or what, 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 whether he would approve that document, I think is the next step. And then depending on what he says, I would give the petitioner a chance to comment on it and uh, but I do, I do not believe you need to do a, a new petition uh, presentation along with the fifteen minutes for, fifteen minutes against. I think that happened last week, but I do think the highway engineer should, should be able to come. And then I think the petitioner should be able to respond to whatever the highway engineer says.
I agree with that.
Thank you. And, and I will point out that Commissioner Thomas did watch last week's meeting as well uh, because we have it recorded. So I think she's uh, clued in as to what has been going on. Plus she sits on the planning commission, so she's heard this multiple times. So um, I'd like to ask our county engineer to step forward at this point and give us his reaction to the um, information that was presented by the petitioner's engineer. Good morning, Mr. Satterley. Please make sure the microphone's turned on.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I took a look at the uh, analysis that was done for the site distance and had a couple of comments. I don't know if you got my email forwarded to you.
I didn't see it.
I can leave a copy with you when I'm, when I'm done here, but uh, took a look at the uh, site distance analysis and um, they are correct in terms of the required site distance of three hundred and thirty-five feet for a minor collector, thirty mile an hour speed limit. The driver's eye, uh, well, the horizontal, I comment on the horizontal uh, site distances they show in the drawing. Uh, we typically, you know, the fifteen feet, ten to fifteen feet from the edge of pavement is correct for the driver's location. And then we go to the center of the lane uh, of the roadway that's coming towards the driveway there. So um, the basic geometry shown there in the horizontal view is, is okay. When we do our analysis for an intersection or driveway, we don't like to uh, leave the pavement because there's no guarantee that vegetation will always be maintained, always be cut to the proper height. Uh, so we typically don't go outside that edge of pavement. So I do the same thing on intersections when we design roadways. So that gives me some pause in terms of uh, you know, the ability to maintain that uh, line of sight. And also, we like to look at the vertical profile because of the, you know, you got the hill there, the driver's eye is three and a half feet, the object height is two feet. And if you're looking up the road, you want to make sure whatever is between the driver and the vehicle oncoming is clearly visible. You know, the entire time it's uh, starts at that three hundred and thirty-five feet. So that's one thing that's missing that we'd like to see in addition. But um, based on the horizontal site distance, cutting across on the inside of the curb, I would not recommend uh, approval of this driveway at this location.
Do you have questions or comments?
Sorry, I was just wondering if um, Ms. Ridge had anything to add.
No, I'm, I think having Paul here was part of the, uh, we just got the site analysis. It gave him time to uh, look at it, compare. Uh, he's very consistent on uh, when he does these site distance monthly for our traffic commission for stop sign requests. Um, and he's following the same guidelines that we use for uh, driveway approvals um, and intersections.
Great, thank you.
And there are times when people don't really follow the speed limit also. And, and I noticed, I noted this when we first, when I first heard this, when, and I'd driven out there. And people that are coming from the east, they're coming downhill on a curve. And so that also for me impacts what's going on here um, in terms of safety for people on the road especially. Um, and so I appreciate you coming forward today and, and giving us your assessment.
Okay, did you want this copy?
I, I would like that. We did not receive it on email, so that would be great. If you could pass it to Ms. Purdy, she can get it to us. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you ma'am. Didn't show up in my.
I did not receive this either.
Okay. So at this point, we will allow the petitioner, um, and it's unclear to me exactly who the petitioner is at this point. Um, last week, we heard from two different Mr. Stephen Warners. One, um, Stephen Warner Senior is the, I understand, the property owner. Um, and his son, Stephen Warner Junior, is the managing director for the company. So I'm not sure exactly who the petitioner is in this situation. Could that be clarified for me, please?
Yes, I believe the petitioner is technically Werner Group LLC, which is the company that owns the property. Um, and I believe that um, Mr. Werner Senior and Mr. Warner Junior uh, are both involved with that company. Uh, so most of the uh, presentations and communication throughout the planning commission process um, has been with uh, Mr. Stephen Warner Junior. Um, Senior has also provided comment here and there, but I would say most communication through open gov and on the um, committee meetings um, has been with Junior.
Okay, so um, if one or both then of uh, Mr. Warners uh, wishes to respond to Mr. Satterley's um, presentation, you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is uh, Stephen Michael Warner. I'm not technically a junior, but I am the, the younger of the two. Uh, we are both owners of the Marina and my dad is the majority owner. I'm an attorney, licensed attorney in the state and I represent the group and my, my father in this matter. So either way, I'm the, I'm authorized representative just to clear that up and an owner. Um, so um, my response is, is that the engineer exceeded the mandate of the, 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 what was in the uh, the actual ordinance that was proposed by, out of the plan commission. Uh, we did achieve the site distance. Everyone during the plan commission was aware that the brush had to be cleared, that the standard was clearing the brush. There is a licensed surveyor on the plan commission who, who evaluated this and, and said it would be sufficient. So uh, a-again, you know, we mentioned this in the, in the last, and I wanted to touch on a few things from the last that we had to do some more research on from the last meeting. But first of all, this idea that we intentionally didn't show up to the appeal is, is, is false. Uh, we were not properly notified of the appeal. Uh, basically, the appeal was done out of order. We stated clearly and I, I attached my letter that was submitted at the time of the appeal decision that this appeal was instituted only because this denial permit came as a surprise to us in the middle of a proceeding on the same subject matter. Which, to me, instituting a hearing in the middle of another county hearing that had already been in, been going on, already the, the plan commission had met, I think, four times before uh, either this denial of permit was issued or the appeal that we put in. And we only put the appeal in because by the statute, we had to within thirty days. And I stated clearly in my letter, which I attached to exhibit A, that we don't believe that the, either the denial of the permit was appropriate at the time or the, or a hearing of the appeal was appropriate at the time due to the rezone. Uh, so basically what we have here amounts to double jeopardy, number one. And it amounts to ineffective notice because the only notice that we got of this May eleventh hearing was a post to the portal, which your own, your own uh, director of uh, highway department says was in it, claimed was ineffective notice to her when we timely put our engineer's report in the portal on the fourteenth of August, giving her sixteen days to review. She said, well, I didn't get enough notice to look at this. And so it can't be both things. Uh, this was not a publicly held hearing on the eleventh. It was a special hearing to hear our appeal. We were only, it was only posted by someone that we were not in contact with either. So it got lost in the shuffle. We were preparing for the May sixteenth hearing, which was the final hearing, which was the important hearing to us. And it was made clear in my letter that it was inappropriate for an appeal to be heard or a denial permit to be undertaken in the middle of the process that, on the same subject matter. It's a pretty simple due process matter there that you instituted a s- a secondary procedure that covered the exact same subject matter. And, and, and went ahead with the hearing when we requested that here, or said that that hearing was inappropriate given that it was about to be heard at a final hearing of the plan commission. And so I will raise this in court if we don't get approval today. The next, the next uh, section, section two, uh, director of public, or director, I'm sorry, of uh, planning commission, Jalen uh, enunciated the, the wrong standard in the last meeting. She said that five residents is were, were allowed to to uh, share a driveway cut and that is not correct. The highway department's code, uh, code section seven fifty-five of the Monroe County Code is very clear that no more than two single-family residents are allowed to share a, a cut on the county right of way. It's very clear and I, I've, I've put it in my new letter here again. This is the second time and it keeps, I, I actually have the, the site here and the portion of the Monroe County Code. Whatever she's referencing, maybe there's some other uh, manual or something. This is a county right of way. It is not allowed for more than two single-family residents to be on any driveway cut in the county. And this was a standard at the time. It's been the standard the entire time. And if an attorney had represented the shells in the beginning, I believe we would never, we'd never be here because it's just not allowed. It's not allowed. You're putting three residences on this driveway cut with a commercial property, which is, I can't, I don't know. I would like the highway department to show us an example of that. And, and so the, the Monroe County Code, section seven fifty-five dash seven four, we've searched the entire code, Monroe County Code, which is the only applicable body of law here. We searched the entire code for the standard that Director Jalen announced at the last meeting, which we believe is completely mistaken. And, and the highway department is only supposed to follow this part of the code. Whatever standard she, she enunciated is not relevant. So first of all, this, putting these three residences on one driveway cut is not allowed. It's never been allowed. This is a prior part of the code to all of the other standards we're talking about here. So whatever we do here, it's illegal. And, and so to, to put this driveway onto our existing driveway. So it needs to go somewhere else. And that brings me to a future point. If you can scroll down, Drew. So uh, real quick, I just touched on this. The site distance uh, thing was a compromise with the plan commission. It's after hearing the evidence, including the trap, parts of the traffic video. We didn't get all the way through it. And I totally disagree with what you're saying about it not being an important video to watch because engineers, the Hamers can speak to this, one of whom is, is an engineer, Colin, who works for Borg Warner. Engineers do not design things for the average or the lowest common denominator. They always design for peak traffic, okay? They design anything. The code is informed by peak traffic patterns. And what we showed were days that weren't even peak, actually, but proved that the ADT numbers that, that the highway department were relying on were not accurate. They don't even include all the golf cart tra, they don't include any of the traffic coming from the trailer park across the street because where they measure ADT is a half a mile to the west. Okay, they don't even, it isn't even relevant to what we're talking about. And the plan commission is able to hear evidence like that and, and determine that the traffic patterns that are, are not properly, and, and so we went through this. We actually had three public hearings on top of four other individual hearings that the plan commission had on its own that were publicly, and so seven total hearings to determine that, including a licensed surveyor who's on that commission, that, that informed us that yes, if the sightline could be met, if the brush could be cut back. By the way, you just authorized ordinance to allow you to do it, to allow you to maintain exactly what we're, you just right before this. It's, it's, and, and the standard that was enunciated in the last meeting that we had to in perpetuity, if you enforce that standard on every citizen in every case, nothing would get done in the county. That is not the standard that the code requires. And, and you just authorized the Highway Department to not only maintain the right-of-way brush, which they already do, which they already did in this case, but also to, to have a means to get trees cut in the future, too. It's, it's, it's amazing to me that you just authorized that and said it wasn't possible in the last meeting. So let's go to the next section real quick. So the historic driveway cuts. So first of all, the 2007 rezone condition was an error, number one, because it ultimately put three resident, single-family residents on one driveway cut in the county right-of-way, which is not allowed by Section 755 of the Monroe County Code that I cited already, number one. Number two, there was an actually much better option, an existing option. And I, I provided an aerial from 2003 when the shells took over. So if you can scroll down to the exhibits, Drew. Drew couldn't go back this far. Drew, Drew could go back to 2005 after, after the shells, okay, there you go. After, after the shells took over in 2003, they bought it in 2003. So this is the aerials that Mr. Hamel, who owned the property at the time, had taken. Okay, so you see the campground in the red circle and the driveway cut for the red circle. And, and if you do look at the 2005 aerial or the current aerial today, you'll notice that that drive still exists. That is Mr. Hamel's drive that's encroaching illegally on the property of the Gravelys, still to this day. That was the most appropriate pathway, much shorter pathway, and, and could have legally, legally with an ingress, egress easement with Mr. Hamel, allowed him to use that driveway, too. If you'll see that the, the distance to that to this day is, I'd say, a fourth of the distance we're talking about here. So what you're talking about is building a driveway that's going to eliminate three, at least three mature trees, eliminate. So we didn't even get into that in the last meeting, which we did get into in the Plan Commission, meaning drainage. The LLCD provided support for us that they didn't want any more drainage in the lake. You saw the flood plan that Drew showed earlier. There's extreme drainage problems here. We spent, I think it was $40,000, $50,000 dredging out our bay there this, this year because of the very severe drainage problems here. You're talking about putting a 1,440 square foot driveway, eliminating three trees, eliminating all that grass that now absorbs rainwater, and you're going to put it straight into the, into the, into the lake, which we never really heard from, when we asked Telsey to, to, to provide a report, it was never provided. We did hear from the LLCD, who clearly said they don't support any more asphalt drainage being directed into the lake, which, what this will do. And so what I'm saying here is if, if for some reason this driveway that we're finding so offensive here isn't, has to be removed, there, another pathway was way more logical at the time. And the Highway Department also neglected to look at this driveway that's, that's just patently illegal. There's no right for it to be there. Mr. Hamel was a former owner of the Marina only, has no privity with the Gravelys. It's, there's no recorded easement. And so what I'm trying to illustrate here is, and, and I think the Plan Commission saw in its unanimous vote in the end, was there have been a number of errors here. So let's go back real quick to Ms. Ridge's 2016 driveway permit. It is not in the record that she revoked, I'm sorry, she keeps saying it, she said it at several meetings, but there is no documentary evidence that that driveway permit was revoked in 2016. I checked the record again. Alls I see is the actual permit from 2016 allowing the Johnsons to construct the driveway. Now, I, I do acknowledge that in 2019, this plat amendment was entered into by the Johnsons. The Marina had no privity in that process, no notice of that process, no, no opportunity to comment or anything. The Johnsons, so, so what I'm trying to paint a picture here is the Johnsons are the only ones that profited from this whole series of events. They hid the fact, they showed the Gravelys and the other party, I'm forgetting their names, I'm sorry, or other neighbors. They showed them at the time they sold these properties, residential properties, the driveway permits that were issued. I still not have seen documentary evidence of the, I'm not saying it didn't happen, but if we have to go to court, we'll discover that. We'll, we'll, we'll definitely go after that. What I'm saying here is that there is a third party here that profited off all this. The Johnsons bought the properties from the shells. They're the ones that constructed the buildings. They're the ones that constructed the driveway pursuant to a permit in 2016 that we still haven't seen documentary evidence was revoked, as Ms. Ridge says. If, if so, we'd like to see the letter to the Johnsons. But all in all, neither the Marina, the Gravelys, or other neighbors are at fault for that. We were only shown that there was a driveway permit and that the Highway Department allowed this driveway, okay? And we were not shown anything else. And at the time, that driveway did, the site distance requirement was met according to the Highway Department, if you see it. The, the, the site distance changed 35 feet in the intervening years. And, and I, I would submit, at this time, it's not appropriately to retroactively apply it. But we went ahead on good faith and through a unanimous, unanimously approved process, paid good money to have the trees and the brush removed, understanding. So, so again, we're, we, we did something to our detriment based on documentation that was provided to us under county seal that, that now is being questioned. The engineer now is saying, well, I wouldn't permit, that's not even relevant to the ordinance. The extra, the extra question there, we don't find, we don't believe is relevant to the question. And again, this goes back to why, why are we being treated? We're trying to do the right thing for our neighbors, and you're about to hear from our neighbors who all, all support. You have nobody opposing this in the entire proceedings. You have the Lake Lemon Acres, the 100, 200 trailer park owners and from Salt Lake City, they're managed, you know, they're, they're, because they know their residents use this property. And if you put this driveway there, they're going to be at cross, cross purposes to this, and yet another resident, two residences. It's going to be a traffic snarl. That's what we were able to prove in the Plan Commission with licensed surveyors on that commission. And, and so I, it's just, I'm incredulous now that we're basically reopening it like we never submitted any, or we didn't go through three public hearings already discussing all this. And so with that, I, I don't, I don't want to go back to the traffic video. I could point out the, the stats are important. Again, you design for the highest use, not the most common or the lowest common denominator. And tying these driveways together, if you look at that video, in our honest, are definitely going to cause cross-traffic because you see the residents leaving safely, backing out, going in forward on that separate drive and not interacting at all with the commercial traffic that's heavily happening right down the street from it. And so there's a high-visibility sign that was installed for pedestrian, pedestrian crosses. There, there's all kinds of, there are reflectors at the end of the driveway. And in seven years of data, I can't, there have been dozens, multiple dozens of wrecks along North Shore Drive within a quarter mile of this curve. Zero have happened in this curve. Just an eighth of a mile, a gray avenue up the road, there have been like 10 or 11 over that period of time. And that's supposedly.
Is this in response, sir, is this in response to what Mr. Satterly said?
Yes, I do believe, because I, I don't believe the drive is unsafe. What he was saying is he wouldn't approve it today, which is irrelevant, actually. At the time, it was originally approved in 2016, which it was approved, whether it was retracted or not is, is a real question because we don't have documentary proof of that. And so the Johnsons definitely showed that driveway permit when they sold the property after they agreed to the plat amendment, which none of the other parties here were, were privy to. The Johnsons did that, not the Marina, not, and so the county's beef really should be with the Johnsons, if anybody.
Thank you. I will note for the record that when the Plan Commission forwarded this to us, it said that with the following condition, the petitioner contracted an Indiana licensed engineer to prove that site distance can be met and, and approved by the Monroe County Highway Department. It had to be approved by the Highway Department. So I will, I will also say that I don't think that this is double jeopardy.
That's not what the engineer said.
Excuse me, Mr. Warner.
This isn't a conversation.
This is not a conversation. I don't feel that having two opportunities to have a driveway approved is double jeopardy. You got two chances, not a single one. And didn't I see Mr. Myers in this packet that it showed a copy of the denial from 2016? And I'll remind everyone that it was not the county that instituted a highway appeal on this driveway.
To that end, I don't know, Mr. Cockrell, if you can speak to the question raised by the petitioner regarding a notification on an appeal and how they are notified.
I'd have to look into it because that was a while ago, and I don't remember how it occurred. But I would say that appeals are driven by the appellant.
Yeah.
And so the county does not hold appeals unless someone has said, hey, I want to appeal this, in which case we had this in this case. It sympathize that there are deadlines that once you get that, you have to appeal. But there are also deadlines you have to hear the appeal, so, you know.
Yeah.
And, and I guess further, I think that the, the Plan Commission acted independently of that whole process. So this is coming to you through the Plan Commission's process. And really, the, that appeal process, I, I thought was more of an explanation of why it took so long to get here as opposed to any kind of factual basis for any kind of decision.
Thank you.
I also have another question for you, Mr. Cockrell. Since we heard people in support of the petition and had no one who was against it last week, do we need to, again, open the floor for that?
I, I think your, the, the code that, that governs this allows for one 15-minute speaking before, one 15-speaking after. So I don't think it's required. I also don't think it's, I don't think it would, it would cause any real violation of your code either if you wanted to go ahead and allow that happen. I think, but if you do one, I think you should do both, but you don't have to do either.
Ms. Ridge, did you have something to add?
Yeah, if you have, if you have any questions for Ben, he is the one that worked with the driveway permits, very familiar with what happened in 2016, if you want any answers to those or the Chapter 755 question that we're being accused of not following. But he is on Zoom if you have questions for that.
I, I would like Mr. Ayers to respond.
Yes, Mr. Ayers, please go ahead.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here.
Just to touch base on the notification for the appeal, Anita Freeman had put a comment, giving the meeting date and time on May the 2nd at 9:20 in the morning, giving notice of the time and the hearing of the meeting. That's how we knew when it was. Mr. Warner should have got that notice as well. Do you have specific questions you want me to go into on 755 or?
Well, if, if you could respond to the assertion that, that was made by the petitioner regarding how many residences can be on a driveway.
Okay, and, and so my understanding, and Jackie Jalen can touch on this more, but in the planning code, it allows up to five residential drives or residential homes to use one drive before it has been built, county standards. That is the only one that I know of. We, I've never knocked somebody because there's three homes or four homes off of a single driveway, as long as they have easement showing that. We've never, never done that.
Yeah, thank you. We, we heard a petition last night at the administrative meeting for the Plan Commission with four homes on one drive, so.
And I, I'm just pulling up the previous item that you guys approved today. And, and while it does say essentially that you can't have more than two single-family or duplexes residents on a driveway, it does say that driveway is located or to be located within the county right-of-way that serve or will serve more than two single-family or duplex residents or subject to a private road approach provisions of this chapter. It may be approved if the Board of Commissioners of Monroe County, Indiana, authorizes the private road approach, finding that it would be in the best interest of the citizens of Monroe County and the conditions of a different paragraph are followed. So in, in some respects, we're using the word driveway, and I think this says a driveway is permitted if you use this private road approach.
Right, right. And I think what's on the screen is what was, is recent. But Ben, if you could address the 2016, that it was revoked on that same day, the documentation for that, is that something that we can provide?
We do have the original permits that were issued there. I would have to check in to see if we done files, if I remember correctly. I actually spoke with Craig and Sonny Johnson, explained it to them, and they were going to make it right. As we know, it didn't happen. So then when they come back for all these other petitions that had came, we made it clear, had it put on the final plat. We also had spoke with the shell, the shells on this as well because they were trying to do something with their letter of credit they've had on file for years. And so we brought it up to them in a meeting, and I believe Jackie, it was either Jackie who was in that meeting with me or Jason Aiken.
I went back because I was a no vote on this petition originally. But I did vote yes on this because of the condition. I went back and found my notes when I came back to the office today from that meeting. And why I voted yes was because of this condition, which is the petitioner will contract, contract with an Indiana licensed engineer to prove that site distances can be met and approved by the Monroe County Highway Department. I wanted to give the petitioner that opportunity. But as you know, But as you know, as Mr. Satterly notes, um, that has not met the approval of Monroe County Highway. And, um, this is something where, um, a rezone and, um, um, planning petition was brought in 2007. And everything was settled then. And since that time, sixteen years, it hasn't been followed. And rather than being grateful for the fact that it hasn't been followed and, um, there hasn't been an issue, um, it's, um, being put forward that somehow this is a precedent and it's not. The 2007, to me, the, the decision was the decision. I wasn't part of it, um, but I support that decision that was originally made. So I feel that this is a question of a highway department, um, and acknowledging, um, their abilities and, and right to make an, um, an assessment of site distance, which is in the condition, and they did not meet that condition. Um, and second, um, it is for me, um, we're being asked to affirm a decision that's already been made, and that's not our role here. Um, so I, um, am going to be a no vote on this one.
Uh, I need to say also that, um, I feel like we, we're being asked to just approve something that was done in error. And it, it's not that the current owners knew about that. It's not that the current owners, um, are responsible for that. But, um, we're asking that it be made right and that it be made consistent with what was, uh, done, that what was laid out in 2007, so that there were no new driveways off of East North Shore Drive. Um, and so I also, uh, plan to, will be voting no on this. And it, but it, it, it is not without a lot of thought. And as, uh, as I've said before, I've been out there twice to look at things. Um, and I don't remember on any rezone that I've done, that I've gone out twice on something. Um, so if there is no more discussion, I'd like to have a vote on this. All those, um, in favor of ordinance 2023-29, the Lake Lemon Rezone, signify by saying aye. All those against ordinance 2023-29, Lake Lemon Marina Rezones signify by aye also. Aye, motion is denied two to zero. With that, I'll note that we have no appointments, um, that we are hosting with, uh, multiple other entities. Paint the Town Purple this Friday, September the eighth, on the south side of the courthouse lawn from 5:30 to 7:30. Free COVID testing is still available at the health department and at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic on East Miller Drive. We do still have a few openings on boards and commissions. And if you're interested, please go to co.monroe.in.us for more information and for the application. Uh, we continue to hold office hours on, uh, six per month. You can find those on the county calendar at the same website. We are hosting with Ivy Tech and the American Red Cross Blood Drives. The next one is tomorrow, September the seventh, from one to six. And on Friday, from, uh, ten to three. There's one October, Wednesday, October the eighteenth, from ten to three. On Thursday, October nineteenth, from one to six. Again, those are at Ivy Tech and Shreve Hall. Uh, given that we may be having more negative weather coming up, we, and also things related to health, uh, we urge residents to sign up for Monroe County Alert Notification System. Again, that's at co.monroe.in.us. And finally, for county residents that need assistance for, with rent and utilities, if you are income eligible, please contact your local township trustee for information and, and application. They are there to help you, and they are able to do that with additional assistance funds that have come from the Monroe County Commissioners and County Council. So with that, uh, we will adjourn the meeting. We will return on Wednesday, September the thirteenth for our next meeting. And I thank everyone for your attendance.
Do we have a work session item?
Do we have a work session item? Yes, we will be back. Uh, it is ten, eleven seventeen, be back at eleven thirty?
Yeah.
For a quick work session? Thank you.
Thank you.